Um. So here are your journalism standards. And as I said before, the only thing that your test is made of, the only documents that Pearson receives from T E A, the Texas Education Agency are these legal documents, the standards which we are legally bound to. It 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 denotes everything that we need to know about journalism. And everything that we need to be able to do regarding journalism in the classroom. And it also adds, because that's what the teaks are. The teaks are what the student need to know about journalism, what they need to be able to do with regards to journalism. Your standards have that added leg of pedagogy, right? Because you're the teacher. So it's not just enough for you to know about journalism and to know how to do, you know, journalistic skills. You also have to be able to plan instruction that would allow your students to gain that knowledge in journalism, to gain those journalistic skills. You have to be able to plan for diversity of students so that all students are able to achieve your um your your goals, right? Master you the objectives that you planned for. So like I said, this document, your standards document, very important that you print this out. Um, and that you do a deep reading. A deep reading is something very different than a surface reading. For many people, when I um, before I started sort of emphasizing the need to like dialogue with this text, which means that you expand on it, which means you draw pictures if you need to. You write examples off to the side, questions for me later. You are dialoguing with this task and test text, sorry. Um, so each of these standards I would go through with a fine tooth comb and and the overarching definition. Each one of these I would paraphrase myself because that does something we know based on learning theory, right? Based on science that when you, when your brain does um paraphrasing, when it reads something and it is able to put it in its own words, that means you comprehended it. That means you understood it because you are able to synthesize it and retell it in in your own way. When you write that down or you jot it down even smaller, that does something in your brain neurologically, creating that neurological pathway that internalizes that knowledge, internalize it and makes it your own. We use this chunking the text and paraphrasing on any challenging text in English Language Arts and Reading, in our history classes when they're reading texts, um in our science classes when they're reading, you know, articles and texts that are challenging. Having the students use meta cognitive skills, which is what this is. I'm checking for my understanding. I did a surface reading and then I asked myself, do I know this well enough? Did I understand what was said? If I can say it in my own words um and sort of paraphrase it, then I do. Writing it down adds that kinesthetic, that tactile activity that does something extra for the brain. So standard one, and I'm going to erase this and go to like the larger view of standard one. The journalism teacher understands and applies. It's not just enough for you to understand. You have to be able to apply this knowledge in the classroom setting for the students. So you understand the development historically of journalism, um the role of mass media in society and skills needed to evaluate messages, right? To be critical, informed consumer of mass media. So for standard one, if I was gonna re-articulate it, the main goal would be really building on the skills to evaluate mass media and be critical and really understand how mass media has changed journalism, the historical development. And and now the role that mass media has in society, because if you look back, you know, the even to the nineteen eighties, uh there was not this mass media as we now know it. Media is all the time. There's always a news source on. There's always like an intent entertainment source on. Now with the role of social media, you get these little small chunks of mass media sort of put into their algorithms on TikTok or Facebook or Twitter. So the role and and the effect has changed so much. And and that's why it's so important, this last leg, to be able to communicate or evaluate the messages to so that we can be informed and critical and not be swept away with like conspiracy theories and trends that are like bad for, you know, he- unhealthy behavior trends. So the way that we read this document is everything on the left hand side are the the knowledge concepts that you need to know. What do you need to know? And on the right hand side, we have what do you need to be able to do? It is the application of that knowledge in the classroom setting. The specifics that you need to be doing, every single one of these you have to do in your class on the right hand column. And for the purposes of the exam, more often than not, you're going to be, the the correct answer is going to be a teacher doing something from the right hand column. They'll be analyzing the role and significance of online journalism in contemporary society, in in a a scenario, right? Something that you have to be able to do. So as you read through these, if you don't know what transmit culture is, no big deal. We don't know everything about everything. I don't know everything about everything. So when I do a deep dive, if I don't know, like for instance, I don't know the John Peter Zenger case. I don't know it. But if they listed it in my standards, if it's all, if it's listed in the teaks, I have to look it up and jot it down because it is eligible to be on my exam in some form or fashion. So when I say do a deep dive of your standards, anything that you don't know, and we're gonna look up this one right now together. And we're gonna just think about how this sort of fits itself in the um, oh, great. I should have known this and I don't. So um, it's part of US history. Clearly, my US history teacher was not so great. So um, no democracy has existed in the modern world without the existence of a free press. So the trial of Peter, John Peter Zenger was about free tra- free press. A New York printer was an important step towards this most precious freedom for American colonists. He was a German immigrant who printed a publication called The New York Weekly Journal. This publication harshly pointed out the actions of the corrupt royal governor, William B Cosby. It accused the government of rigging elections and allowing the French enemy to explore the New York harbor. It accused the governor of assortment of crimes and basically labeled him an idiot. Although Zenger merely printed the articles, he was hauled to jail. The authors were anonymous and Zenger would not name them. So he was protecting his sources, um which is what we now have today. So he really was the founder of that. Um. The first jury was packed with individuals on Cosby's payroll. My goodness, really was uh so uh Zenger was accused of libel, illegal term, meaning quite different for us today than it was for him. For us, it's like printing falsities. Um, when you publish information that was opposed to the government, that's what it meant then. But now it's like, if it's, if you're saying false things. True or falsity was irrelevant back then. But for us, it's like, if you're, if you're printing false things about someone, you're gonna get a defamation and you are liable case against you. Um. The first jury that throughout the process, Zenger's wife Anna kept the presses rolling. Her reports resulted in replacing Cosby's jury with a true jury of Zenger's peers. When the trial began and Zenger's new attorney began his defense, a stir fluttered through the courtroom. The most famous lawyer of the colonies, Andrew Han- Hamilton of Philadelphia stepped up to defend Zenger. How, Hamilton? See, I haven't seen Hamilton either. So maybe that's part of like the play, which I haven't seen. Hamilton admitted that Zenger printed uh the charges and demanded the persecution to prove them false. In in stirring appeal to the jury, Hamilton pleaded for his new client's release. Is not the cause of one poor printer, but the cause of liberty. So very cool. And um although true freedom of the press was not known until the passage of the First Amendment, newspaper publishers felt freer to print their honest views as the American Revolution approached. This freedom would become even more vital. So you would write just a little blurb about him and how he helped in the beginning, you know, helped further um the path towards the adoption of the First Amendment and and free press, right? And so any of these you you are not familiar with ideas, you certainly have to look them up. And we will um, I I'll pull up your teaks right now. I'm sorry, it's telling me my my office hours are beginning. So let's take a look at your teaks. And if I'm not mistaken, your teaks are possibly in the reading and language arts. Let's see. Philosophy, philosophy, philosophy. That's not it. So here we are. You will have to go to the English Language Arts and Reading High School. Now, look, look at, look at this page just for a second because I always like to draw everybody's attention, like this is the law. You know, this is like the the webpage for the Office of the Secretary of State, right? This is Texas Administrative Code. It it's the law that we, that the students, when they leave our classroom, that they are, that they know these things that are listed, the knowledge concepts. That's why Texas essential knowledge and skills. So journalism is lumped under um English Language Arts and Reading and for good purpose. So you must go through each of these and again, like you did with your standards. And you're gonna see that there's a lot of overlap because the same things that you need to know and be able to do are this, you need to know and be able to do them because you're gonna be doing them with your students. Because they also need to learn about um the man we just learned about, and I've already forgotten his name, John Peters anger, right? They also need to like have that. It's gonna be in one of their teaks, right? Where they have to understand this historical framework for um, not this one, for. So we'll take a look. Uh, the introductions for for the classes are very important for you to read because you're gonna know what what does the state have in mind as far as their goals for this class. So you'll be able to answer questions on the exam. What is in the, what is the most appropriate activity? What is the most um beneficial event or um strategy for them? And we'll we'll be able to know that if we have a really good understanding of what they're supposed to be learning and what the goals the state have for the content um for this subject as a whole. So students enrolled in journalism write in a variety of forms for a variety of audiences and purposes. Variety of forms, variety of audiences, variety of purposes to inform, to persuade, to entertain, all of the ways. High school students enroll in this course uh are expected to plan, draft, and complete written compositions on a regular basis, carefully examining their papers for clarity, engaging language, and the correct use of con- the correct use of conventions and mechanics of written English. Which is why, as I said, for good reason, journalism is under English Language Arts and Reading because it comes after we've established some substantial conventions and mechanics. And you know, teaching them how we do write for different audiences and different purposes and how how we speak to them and use different language when we're we're have different goals for our message and different audiences that we're we're speaking to. So um, in journalism, students are expected to write in a variety of forms and for a variety of audiences and purposes. Students will become analytical consumers of media and technology. Analytical. We need them to be analytical. Who is saying this message? Where is it coming from and what is their purpose? Like, who is their audience? What is their goal? Looking at it from a, from like a very objective, like I'm not falling into this. Like, where is the message? What is the overall uh the real goal here for the speaker? Um, or the bearer of the message. We want them to be analytical consumers, not just um sort of unaffected consumers, just completely uh gorging themselves on media without looking at any of it analytically to say, what is the point of this message? Like, what is the goal of this message? Um, of of media and technology is very, very important to enhance their communication skills. So we want them to talk about it. We want them to talk. And that means you're gonna have a lot of think pair shares, a lot of dialogue, a lot of discussions where you are point uh, you know, posing for them poignant questions for them to analyze different medias, um different um texts. Published works of professional journalism, technology, visual and electronic are used as tools for learning. So we have to look at all of them. We're not just looking at articles, looking at, we of course are looking at articles of professional journalists, but like technologies that would mean many, many documentaries. I mean, uh visual and electronic media, I mean, the New York Times put together of what I would call short, but I think it's like thirty minutes long. And it's all of their journalistic like clippings and everything about January sixth. And it's like damning, you know what I'm saying? Like you watch it and you're like, whoa, I can't believe that that happened. And this is really um, it it crazy that that went on. And it wasn't an article, you know, it but it had newspaper clippings and and headlines of things and flashes and videos and people's um interviews, you know, lawmakers' interviews. And so it really was journalistic, obviously through and through, but it was just a different media than your typical print. So that visual electronic media, we have to use those also as tools for learning because they're not only gonna come into contact with print, they're gonna be ingesting TikToks um and 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 other forms of uh media that present themselves as, you know, with the same level of journalistic integrity that some other, you know, and and they they really believe it too. So we have to get the students to be analytical consumers, be able to like critique, evaluate, and also create and clarify, you know? Um, it would be a great activity for some of your advanced journalism to like create a uh, you know, if they find a a piece of media that's particularly biased or does not show the facts to do a sort of rebuttal piece, you know, or rebuttal TikTok where they do present facts and and show real journalistic integrity. Um, that's something I would do if I were a journalism teacher today. So but journalism's really fun for the kids. They love it because they get to do a little bit more sort of controversial, pushing the envelope than just the English Language Arts and Reading class. Um. Pub uh, let me see, do do do. So students create, clarify, critique, write and produce effective communications. Students enrolled in journalism will learn journalistic traditions, research self-selected topics. Very important, that self-selected topic. It's very important that we allow the students agents of their own in, you know, learning um and and go where their journalistic interests take them. That's how journalism sort of works, you know? A journalist gets the story that they think is interesting and they they need more about, and then they go after it hungry for it and pushing the envelope to to really um shed light on things. So they have to write journalistic texts and learn the principles of publishing. So principles of publishing are are one of the goals as well. And then these are the specifics. And um, for high school students whose first language is not English, the student's native language serves as foundation for English language and uh English language acquisition and language learning. So we we have to help our E L L students do all the things that that are here, but also provide ways to support them in their uh language acquisition. And that means that you are defining more words, right? That you are making sure that you're trying to connect if their first language is Spanish, that you that you take that into consideration when you're defining things. And if there is ways to connect prior knowledge or that first language to the second, that you certainly take the time to do that. Because all Texas teachers, whether you're teaching trade, math, science, journalism, uh you're the orchestra teacher, teacher, you're gonna have students who are actively acquiring a second language. And so therefore, it is your duty to help support those students, master your objectives in your particular content area, whether it be journalism, math, or um orchestra, and also acquire the language, right? Build their language, not just in your content area, but um ain't language as a whole, that you're having fruitful conversations, that you're creating um cooperative learning groups and grouping them so that they can acquire language from the model English speakers in their class as well as you. Because they cannot only learn from you, they're learning from their peers as well. So mindful grouping, which I talk about in P P R, really helps so that you have your English language learners with students who are uh high in their oral language proficiency, right? Who who can uh i- if if they, you have a student who also speaks their native language, all the better, right? Because uh their native language is support, not a hindrance, ever, ever. So you need to go through these and 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 see what do they need to get out? What do they need to do and what do they need to know before they leave my Journalism One classroom, right? This is like the beginners of journalism. There's another journalism class and you'll have to go through each of these because anything that they say here is up for grabs.
Yes, might be on the test.
That's right. That's right. So do you have any questions for me? Let me just make sure that my other person hasn't come in yet.
No, uh so far, like while we run out the requirements to complete actually one through four. And because I was speaking with Jenny yesterday and she mentioned that it will give me thirty hours for the discourse, the planning and the lesson planning and through the platform, right?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. Um, so like I said, what I'm showing you right now about the journalism, about your particular content area, the teaks and your standards, um, where are they? Your teaks and your standards, um, this is for your content exam. So I want you to uh and Jenny's right, you will get credit for um courses one through four um hours for the planning, but I want for you to finish your your field-based experiences and then really study for this journalism test so that we can um get you into the, get you into the classroom, you know? Once you pass your journal journalism exam and you have your field-based experience hours, um you can begin working on your, the courses one through four while you're waiting for a job and then have those finished. And now you're done with all that. All you need is the P P R.
Also, right now I should be focusing on study on the content, the journalism content.
I want you to do the field-based experience hours. That's most important for everyone to finish their field-based experience hours. That's so important because remember I said, we have to keep these on file for the state. I can give you extra time to finish one through four because I'm your teacher and I can do that. Um, because you're also learning about those things while studying for your content exam. So do the, finish this course, field-based experience and finish doing your deep dive. Because I'm gonna wanna see your notes. I wanna see your annotations. I wanna see your paraphrasing, your your explanations. How deep did you look at your standards and the teaks? Um, you, once you're done with that, we can um open your your journalism exam. You can take that while you're waiting for the scores. You can get started on course one. And and like I said, if if you um, if you get what what I'm saying, uh a position, I can help you and give you time to finish those courses one through four and even give you credit for having passed all the work that you did for your uh in preparation for your um content exam.
Alright. Sounds good to me. So I I have to focus on the text mostly.
Yes.
Text and standards.
The, yes, your tech, your teaks and your standards, right? And um, the the exam one is, and I'm gonna do it, journalism, lism. Why is it doing that? It like won't let me. Exam. So I'm gonna look at access principal version for offline ease. Juan, I'm gonna put all of this in a folder for you.
Awesome.
And then I will text you the link to your Google Drive and that you can access it there, save it. But here are your standards, right? We were just looking at the standards and I'm telling you, the standards come uh, at standards and your teaks are all that they get it from. All that this, that it comes from. You have mass media and communication is domain one, worth twenty-eight percent, which is a pretty good chunk. That covers your journalism standards one and two. So we go back to your standards. One and two make up domain one, mass media. Along with the teaks that correspond with mass media that the students have to know and the things that they have to be able to do, like critique, analyze. Um. Next, we have journalism writing and photojournalism, which is the largest tur- chunk, thirty-two percent. So right here, you already have sixty percent in two, two domains. So it's very important that you you are very knowledgeable with those, right? Because they make up such such a huge chunk, well over half. And those cover journalism standards three through four and six. Next, you have domain three, which is worth twenty percent. You have journalism standards five and seven make up student-produced media. And that's all about the student doing it and producing the text, producing those media, producing visuals, right? Photojournalism, their production of the media, journalism in the school community, twenty percent. And that is about, uh that is over, I should say, um standards, journalism standards eight through nine. And so here we go again. It's important for you to understand that um, the competency statement, which is this, remember that the test maker turns our standards, they mix them up a little bit, they synthesize them along with the teaks and they they put them into competency. So the competency is like a broad um category of of it is. And this is about his, the history, right? The historical de- development competency one, which makes sense because standard one is about, right? It's about history, uh the the history of journalism. And then we get into the specifics. Anything listed here is up for specific grab. So John P Zenger case up for specific grabs, grab. Uh, these important people in journalism, you have to know every single one of them. If they named them there, it's because they might put them in the exam. They're up for grabs. And they're also people the students will have to know that they they want you to teach the students about. So um I'm gonna put all all of these documents there for you. And and the second leg to standard one was about mass media, remember, the role of mass media, history and how it's changed. So it makes sense that competency two is about that. So um, the next one is about competency three. The understand skills needed to evaluate. And that was the last leg of standard one, right? Being that critical, informed consumer so that we're not led astray by messages, you know, of hate and 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 then going out in society, which it's it's happening here today. And the fourth one is, and this comes from standard two, the ethical, legal and ethical principles of that are relevant, which to be honest with you, have kind of gone out the window a little bit, to be honest with you, in many of our um. Oh, sorry, one. Sorry, I have to answer. Hello, Miss Geta. I'm uh having a session with a student. Can I call you back? Absolutely. Thank you. It's just, uh it'll say that I ignored the call and then it'll like look like, and I'm like, I'm busy. I don't know why it does that. Um, so these key, these key, um, what is it called? Cases, court cases, foundational, we need to know like the what what led up to that solidifying of the First Amendment. Um. Reflects societal views and values. Oh, oops, sorry. Including scholastic pre- press. So everything that is listed here needs a deep, deep dive. And I want for you to just really quickly. In which of the following instances is prior restraint deemed justified by the United States Supreme Court? When there are allegations against the President of the United States, when a court case has not yet gone to cro- trial, when someone's life is in danger, when truth movements are publicized in time of war.
Well, I need to answer, I would say it's D.
B?
D, D, when truth movements are publicized in time of war.
Prior restraint, though, what does prior restraint mean in journalism?
Censor censor the content.
Right, so you censor the con- so when is it allowed? I would say D two because uh that puts lots of people's life in danger, in danger. I mean, just because a court case hasn't gone to trial, people speculate all the time about what might or could have happened. Right?
Yes.
Uh, I mean, we know, yeah, so I would say D is the answer. So let's just do a fast down and we'll see real quick. Should we look at everybody?
No, it's here, yeah.
Right. Yeah, Akista, you're absolutely right. D. Because in near versus Minnesota in nineteen thirty-one, the court ruled that any government may limit information about truth, troop, troop movements in a time of war, which like that seems reasonable. We don't want our enemies who can certainly read our newspapers or our articles to know what what is it that we're doing? That would be, I mean, detrimental. Um, so you have to read the these questions very, very carefully, um. Let me see. Okay, here it is. A journalism teacher is reviewing tips on writing better leads. So that's the goal. When you're reading these, you always have to ask yourself, what's the goal? She's reteaching, reviewing tips. Her goal is that the students write better leads. The teacher presents the class with different leads to the same story about a winter storm. One quarter of an inch, that's all the snow it took to send cars sliding into ditches during a surprise spring snowstorm. One man winter is back again. Students at Morris High School are amazed to see snow falling yesterday in a rare spring storm. The teacher asked the students to choose one lead and explain why it is the best. Using this strategy helps the students realize that what? So she wants them to write better leads, that's the goal. She's giving them two, she's asked them now to choose one and then to explain why it's best. Why is she using the strategy and what is she hoping that they realize?
I would say, um. W- well, we have to include the five W's. I would say B probably, when and where.
Okay, so hold on, let me see. Using this strategy helps students realize that. Yeah, I would say so too, using who. D is out for sure. What other ones could you remove already, like you know for sure they're wrong?
A, I don't think A.
A is not true, right?
Yes.
Okay, so A, I think D. I don't know about this, especially when the student concerns students. I don't know about that. Let's see thirteen.
Oh, it's C.
Yeah, it's C, but now we know it's C. Now you know it's more important using why and how creates a picture. So I guess one would have been better, because it's why and how sliding into this um as opposed to um when and where, so the why and how. The, this post offers offers intrigue and attracts the reader to the story, like, okay, I wanna read about why he went, oh, because of the snowstorm. So I guess one, one would have been uh better. Um, choice. So let's see why B is incorrect. When B is incorrect, because when and where leads are generally weak unless they concern an important factor in the story. Although in certain situations, when and where may be addressed in the lead, this is certainly not always the case. But this was kind of tricky, because students, and if we're talking about students choosing, this is gonna be more like, oh, sorry. That's gonna be more interesting for them, that this, like, an important factor in the story, the important factor for these kids is that snow is falling, you know, like, but but still, the why and the how, you need to remember. So that would be something I would write down in my, on the side of my, um you you know, of my standards, to remember the why and the how creates that picture better and 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 adds the intrigue. So I am going to, um. The. I'm also going to go here, and I think we can, it's just gonna be a lot. You're gonna have to ignore all of this until you get to here in the document, because all of this is uh. Although video, video, visual media analysis and production might be one of yours as well. I think actually it is. So you won't, you won't have to ignore all of it. Some of them you will have to do. So like this one here for sure. Journalism for sure, independent study in journalism, advanced broadcast journalism, photojournalism and advanced journalism. All of these you'll have to look at, the teak. So what I'm gonna do, because I think they they have like the PDF version, I'm gonna put a PDF version in, you can print out just the pages that you need from your teaks. It's gonna be this document here. And I'm gonna pop them in there for you. Oh wait. I'm just gonna send you this in the chat for right now, and you can open it up on your end.
Okay.
And then uh save it in your thing, but I'll I'll also email it to you. I just didn't, I just didn't bring up your information on the screen. So, um. Next time, um, oh, not next time, when you're done with your deep dive of your teaks and your standards, let me know so that we can get you scheduled to take the exam and and maybe run through some of those, um, you know, test strategies, like looking at wo- keywords and phrases. Continue watching um, the the PPR videos though, because it is important for how you plan, like the the portions of the questions that have to do with planning and activities and and motivation. Those come from the PPR.